Okay, we are also live on YouTube. All right, so let's open up the meeting and start to bring the applicants in.
We're just waiting on the applicants for the first item.
I have to tell you, it's very cute here in Park Slope, across from the park, watching these little kids drag their sleds over to the park. It's adorable. I wish I had my flexible flyer from when I was a little kid.
Okay, they're ready.
Come over and get it.
Yeah, you still see a few of those out there, though a lot of people just have a plastic, you know, dish or something now, but, you know, it's nice to see the old ones.
Oh, it's great.
I think we have our applicant now, Sarah.
Okay, great. Okay, so welcome back to the afternoon session of the February 2nd Public Hearing, Public Meeting Day for the Landmarks Preservation Commission. We are in our public hearing agenda, applications for work on designated properties, and we are going to be beginning this afternoon session with item number two. And I will turn it over to, item number one, excuse me, we'll turn it over to Corey Harala, our Director of Preservation, to lead us through the agenda.
Thank you, Sarah. Has stated item number one, we'll begin with that, LPC 19-41363, "An Application for a Certificate of Appropriateness in the Borough of Brooklyn, Block 1258, Lot 49, 294 Albany Avenue in the Crown Heights North 3 Historic District. A Renaissance Revival-style row house designed by Louis Berger &amp; Company and built circa 1902. The application is to legalize modifying a window opening at the rear facade without LPC permits."
Commissioners, the applicants have joined the hearing. Please note that staff will be presenting components of this application, and the attendees are, sorry, the applicants are available for questions, and staff, you may begin.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Elizabeth Fagan, Preservation Staff. As Corey mentioned, the item before you today is to legalize a modified opening at a visible rear facade. This property is located on the west side of Albany Avenue between St. John and Lincoln's Place in the Crown Heights North 3 Historic District. The Commissioners are reviewing the installation of sliding doors at the parlor floor, which you can see up here on the left, which were installed without permits. These doors do not meet staff-level rules due to visibility of this enlarged opening from public thoroughfares, which I'll show you in the next slide. Note that the removal of this stucco installed without permits, as well as some restorative work at the brick facade, will be handled at staff level. Other work being handled at staff level includes the installation of a deck and replacement of windows and doors at the basement and upper floors. These photographs here are taken from Lincoln Place, where you can see the top of this modified window opening over this one-story garage here. So just to point out, you'll see the top of the opening here on the lower left, as well as on the upper left, and some zoomed-in photos as well here and here. Prior to work, this parlor floor opening featured a double-hung window with segmentally arched brickwork at the lintel. The applicant is proposing to retain the existing doors in the current size and location, and are proposing to install arched brickwork over the existing opening to be in keeping with the conditions at other window openings at this facade and other buildings in this row, as you can see that here in the elevation on the lower right. The small area between the new arched brickwork and the top of the door will be finished in a white stucco to match. This slide here is a photo montage representing the views after corrective work is completed, and the facade will be painted to match existing. And again, the top of the window opening is here. This is just a slide showing the existing sliding doors that have been installed, as well as some photos of the existing rear facade, which is here on the right, with other rows, the rear facade of rows in this block. So again, this is our property here, and the other existing conditions of these rear facades. So this concludes the proposal, and the applicants are here and available for any questions.
Okay, all right, Commissioners, do we have any questions for the applicants? Would the applicants like to say anything at this time?
No, I think that was very well presented.
Okay, thank you. All right, so yes, Commissioner Goldblum.
We have any record of approving vinyl windows?
I could take that one. Yeah, actually, for staff-level window replacement, the rules are extremely flexible when the window or door in question is not visible from a public thoroughfare, and it's on a secondary facade, there is no prohibition on the material of the window themselves. And really, the same goes for a visible secondary facade. It's really only a requirement to match configuration and finish, as in the color essentially. So while we don't see many of them for a variety of reasons, there is no staff-level prohibition of them. The Commissioners, you all have seen them a few times, almost always in the context of, you know, an applicant asking to legalize work done without permits. And I think the record is mixed on how that's turned out, but, you know, I think the hierarchy that the staff uses is usually kind of the criteria you all would look at as well, in terms of, is it visible? And so how much? And what type of facade does it occur on?
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, let's see if there's public testimony. If you're in the meeting and would like to speak, please raise your hand so we can identify you. And we'll start with anyone who signed up in advance, and I'll turn it over to Lisa Kersavage to walk us through the testimony.
So I'll actually be taking over for Lisa. We do have some people who signed up, and I will first bring in Simeon. Okay, you should be in the meeting, and you just have to unmute yourself.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Simeon Bankoff is Star District Council. Simply put, this window opening is an inappropriate size and design for this 120-year-old historic building and historic district, is glaringly visible from a public way, and would never have been approved if brought before the Landmarks Preservation Commission as a proposal. We urge the Commission to deny this application and work with the applicant to correct this mistake.
Okay, thank you. And then I will bring in John Graham. John, you should be in the meeting. You just have to unmute yourself and turn on your camera if you wish to.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. John Graham from the Victorian Society. This proposal for the rear wall of the building maintains the height of the historic masonry opening, restores the surrounding brick facade, introduces a conforming brick arched lintel, is only partially and minimally visible from the street, and otherwise will have a minimal effect on the rear yard of this and adjacent buildings. Therefore, the Victorian Society in New York believes the work as proposed can be found appropriate. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We didn't have anyone else signed up, and I don't see any other hands, people trying to testify.
Okay, thank you, Anthony. And Rich, do we have any additional written testimony?
Yes, we do. We received a resolution from Brooklyn Community Board 8 recommending approval, and a letter in support from the Crown Heights North Association.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. I think because there were some comments about, some negative comments, while much of it was supportive, I just want to give the applicant an opportunity to respond if they wish to.
No.
No? Okay, thank you. All right, Commissioners, any final questions? Okay, and I'm starting to request to unmute all of you so that we can close the hearing and begin our discussion. So please check to accept that request. Okay, and Commissioner Bland, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
I'm moved.
And Commissioner Luttrell, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so the hearing is closed, and we'll begin our discussion, and, you know, in terms of material, as Corey pointed out, for both non-visible and visible secondary facades, the staff rules, if the work met the rules, there would be no prohibition on material, or particular vinyl material. So, but this, you know, window is before you today because of its size exceeds the amount that the rules can approve for a visible opening. So the applicant is proposing, in addition, to modify the work by including an arch that would relate to the other arches on the facade. So let's have a discussion about the proposed work in the context of the rear facade and as it's viewed from the street. So Commissioner Holford Smith, would you like to start this one?
Yeah. Sure. I think given its minimal visibility and the inclusion of the brick arch, I would be okay with accepting this.
Okay, thank you.
One thing I'm concerned about is the fact, though, that they stuccoed around the whole opening, so I'm not sure if they're preparing to repair the brick, which is shown on the elevation, which would be perfect.
Yeah, as I understand it, they are, yeah, they're working with the staff to resolve the stucco on the rear facade at staff level. So they should be able to address that at that time.
Okay.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Chapin?
I think this is minimally visible, and I can approve it as presention.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
I don't disagree with those comments, but I do think that vinyl is crap. And I think that we generally try to, apart from the design and appearance, require of applicants a certain level of construction quality commensurate with the quality of their building, their existing building, and I don't think vinyl would rise to that level. I would not vote against this for that reason, but I would urge us to consider the rules that would allow for this kind of product on a historic building anywhere.
Okay. Commissioner Devonshire?
I agree with Commissioner Goldblum about the vinyl. I would hope that our very qualified staff would try and dissuade owners from using what I consider to be a very substandard material. The other issue that I have is I don't think I have a complete explanation about what's going to happen with that stucco. Did they, did they cut the bricks back a foot away in each direction so that they also need to reapply bricks on the surround? And, I mean...
Right. Following up on Commissioner Holford Smith.
My concern, unless they, unless they recreate a surrounded brick masonry, then I'm not willing to approve it.
Okay, and Corey, I don't know if you want to add anything in response to that?
I don't know the particulars of it, other than we understand the intent is to do the proper reinstatement of the brick, with the inclusion of the brick arch, so we'll, you know, we can ensure that that is the work that is done at the perimeter of the opening, and not just a stucco parjing on top of what's on.
Okay, Commissioner Chen?
Sorry, I have trouble, trouble unmuting. Okay. No, I agree with Commissioner Goldblum about the inappropriateness of the vinyl and the rest of the comments.
Okay, but, but he did say he would vote for it in this case because the rules would actually allow the windows below it to be replaced right now in vinyl.
Yeah, that's, that's correct.
Okay. Commissioner Bland?
Yeah, I'm on the same bandwagon, partly because it's so minimally visible.
Okay, Commissioner Luttrell?
Yeah, I, I'm okay with it, but would prefer that they, it not be vinyl. I just want to bring something else up, and I'm guessing it's being approved at staff. But if this brickwork above the door is is being installed, I'm just going to encourage the staff to look at the door and window on the bottom, because I'm assuming you are approving this for consistency.
Right. I believe that, yes, but I think those are being eligible, being reviewed and eligible for a staff permit under our rules.
I know. I know.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Jefferson?
I can approve this, but the issue for me is you have the shallow arch, and the location of it in the facade in relationship to the edges are so odd, could someone, could they, is there any reason why there couldn't be a better alignment with the, with the arch in the center of the panel? I mean, I mean, no one can see it, but it's just annoying to see simple alignments that, you know, that can be done and not done.
Okay. We'll see what, we'll see if there's something that can be done there. Okay. All right, Commissioner Gustafson?
Yeah, I'm in agreement with Commissioner Devonshire.
And Commissioner Shamir Baron?
I am in agreement with Commissioner Devonshire as well. And are we also approving, and are they proposing this rail? Or was that something that they've removed? I may have missed that, I'm sorry.
That railing is an item not visible from a public thoroughfare and would qualify for staff-level review. It's, I think they're turning what's not now a usable deck into one by introducing this door, saying with that.
Yeah, clearly, that's what's going on. I just didn't know if it was part of the proposal.
It's not. That component is not part of what the Commissioners are reviewing tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you all. I think we have enough to support this application, but I think we want to make sure that they continue to work with the staff carefully on the brick treatment around the opening and at the arch to make sure that the brick is resolved and the arch is in appropriate proportion. So Commissioner Holford Smith, would you make a motion with that modification, just to continue to work with, in consultation with the staff on those details?
Yes. In the matter of LPC 19-41363, 294 Albany Avenue in the Crown Heights North 3 Historic District. A Renaissance Revival-style row house designed by Louis Berger &amp; Company and built circa 1902. Application is to legalize modifying a window opening at the rear facade without Landmarks Preservation Commission permits. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features which contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Crown Heights North 3 Historic District. I recommend approval with modifications, finding that the work did not destroy significant architectural features, that only the top portion of the enlargement of the parlor floor window opening and the installation of sliding doors is visible from limited vantage points over a one-story garage building along Lincoln Place. That the width of the enlarged opening is in keeping with typical modifications to rear facades at row houses, and does not call undue attention to itself. That creating a shallow masonry arch over the enlarged opening will bring this insertion closer to other historic openings of this rear facade, and that the stucco between the head of the door and the arch will be difficult to discern. And that the applicant will continue to work with, with staff to remove unsympathetic stucco around the opening, which detracts from the facade, and to ensure that the arch is of proper proportion and the brick is carried all the way around the perimeter of the opening, and that the work will not detract from the special architectural character of the building or historic district.
Okay, and Commissioner Chapin, would you second that motion?
Second.
Okay, and Rich, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Luttrell?
Aye.
And Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
Okay, with 11 in favor and none opposed, the motion carries.
Okay, so that's approved with those modifications, and just please continue to work with the staff. I know that your intent was to make that relate better to the rear facade, so the staff can continue to advise you on how to do that.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
And we'll move to the next hearing item. This is LPC 20-04817, item number two. This is "A Certificate of Appropriateness in the Borough of Brooklyn, Block 5113, Lot 11, 152 Stratford Road in the Prospect Leopards Garden Historic District. Colonial Revival-style freestanding house, and the application is to legalize alterations to the front and side facades and porch without LPC permits."
Commissioners, the applicant has joined the hearing. Please note that staff will be walking you through the components of this proposal, and the owner will have a brief statement at the end. And staff, please unmute yourself, and you may begin.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Marcello Pacheco, Preservation Staff. I will walk you through the components of the proposal. The owner is also here to give a brief statement and answer any questions. This item is 152 Stratford Road in the Prospect Park South Historic District. The application is to legalize work completed without Landmarks Preservation Commission permits, including alterations to the front porch and portico, and alterations to the front and side facades. Proposed corrective work as part of this application is to remove the porch handrails installed without permit, and install black metal picket handrails to match the existing railing at the porch. To the left of the, to the left is a photo of the house from the time of designation, and on the right is a current photo of the building's east and south facades. The previous white siding was removed and replaced with blue vinyl siding and white trim. Note also that the porch at the time of designation featured brick cladding and paving, and black metal picket handrails. The porch was modified with the installation of concrete block cladding and stone paving, and railings with composite posts. We'll get a better view of that in some of the photos later in the presentation. The 1940s tax photo shows a light-finished historic siding throughout, with white painted trim around the windows, and a full-width porch and portico with paneled wood fascias at the base, and no handrail at the steps. Zooming in, here are some of the previously noted alterations at the porch, including gray and natural-finished stone pavers, concrete block at the base, and handrails at the steps. As mentioned earlier, the applicant, applicant has proposed to remove these noncompliant handrails and replace them with black metal picket handrails. Here are views of the vinyl siding at the side facades. Pictured here are Google Street View images showing the work in progress, revealing the underlying condition of the facades in 2019 and 2018. The vinyl siding from the time of designation had been removed, and the historic wood was exposed and repainted at a portion. These are earlier Street Views images from 2011 and 2012, again showing work in progress and details of the underlying conditions. Pictured here are some of the immediately adjacent buildings to the south and north, featuring a number of different types of alterations at the porches, nonhistoric cladding, and metalwork. In conclusion, here is an overall view of the front facade and porch. The owner will now speak briefly and is available to answer any questions.
Hi, I'm available.
Please state your name for the record, and you can speak.
I'm Doreen Quinn Giuliano. I don't know how to get my face in there. Sorry, I see no picture of me. Okay.
Well, we can hear you, so please go ahead.
I've given you, I've asked you to turn on your camera. You just have to hit okay. We can see you now.
Um, so this took me eight years to put together. I tried to restore it to its natural beauty, because that's something that I would be very proud of, but as we attempted to repair the wood, it just continued to crumble. And, um, yeah, the porch was lifted. It had some, water was getting into the basement, so that had to be lifted. All the slate, the original slate, was taken off and then put right back on. I have to say that the railing, I wasn't pleased with it either. The contractor removed it and then replaced it with that white PVC. I wasn't pleased with it, but I didn't want to, um, I didn't want to hurt his feelings, I guess that's the truth. So I left it, and I'm more than happy to change it back to its original railing. Any other questions?
Okay.
So, the front, I'm, what do you call that, the portico, that was restored, pretty much just painted, you know, and repaired, and the emblem that was on the front, you know, restored it. As you can see, you can't even, can't even see it. And the pillars also were cracking. Those were all repaired.
Okay, thank you. We do have some questions. Commissioner Goldblum?
So, thank you for joining our meeting. When you got to the house, did it look like what it shows in the Google Maps, Google Street View there with the white paint and the, the shingles, whatever it was? That's, that's how it looked when you got it?
The white, yes. The siding, yes, the vinyl siding, correct.
And so that was in 2018, so this work was happening between then and now, right?
Um, 2018, uh, yeah, that's right, that's right. Exactly. But it was taken off. My husband had taken it off and found the wood underneath, and he, this was like 10 years ago. And he's trying to restore it to the wood, because he took off all the siding. But every time, like, there was pieces that he was able to restore, but then there was other pieces that just crumbled. Right? It just crumbled.
So how'd you get to the decision of junking it all and going to vinyl?
Because the wood kept crumbling. No matter, some pieces were good. On the side of the house, it was good, and then there was other pieces. When you tried to sand it and paint it, they just fell apart. I guess that that was 100 years old. But, so then, we got a divorce. It sat like that for eight, nine years. And I had to take a loan out to get the money to fix it. It was really a hardship, a real hardship. So I was like, the house, you know, it was, it was a sight for sore eyes, my house for many, many years, until I got the money to repair it. But, believe me, I would have loved to do the wood, because the wood is gorgeous, but there was no way I could do the wood.
All right, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Okay, not seeing any questions at this time. I think we'll move to testimony, and we may have more questions after that. And I do see a couple of hands raised, so if you'd like to speak on this item, just raise your virtual hand, and we'll begin with anyone who signed up in advance. And I'll turn it over to Lisa to walk us through that testimony.
I'll be, I'll be doing testimony. So we do have two people who signed up to speak, and I will bring in John Graham first. John, you just have to unmute yourself and turn on your camera.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. John Graham for the Victorian Society in New York. The VSNY cannot support approval of any of the changes which the applicant is proposing to legalize, changes which are almost a textbook case of the ways a landmark can be damaged when a building owner of the ways a landmark can be damaged when a building owner fails to follow the law. We found the Google Street Photos taken in 2011, in 2018, and in 2019 provided by the applicant to be very informative, noting that sometime before 2011, the modern siding in place at designation had been stripped off. One can see that until 2019, the historic narrow clavert siding and the arched dormer windows with the keystones on the third floor were substantially intact. The pictures also show the sensitive way the front facade was modified when the original porch was removed by the addition of a wide horizontal board below the sills of the second-floor windows to cover up any damage to the areas where the porch had been anchored into the building. The brick cladding, which replaced the masonry at the base of the porch, was in place at designation. It seems an acceptable material for a building of this age and style. And finally, the photos show that between 2018 and 2019, the house was painted, uh, painted white, an appropriate color for a house of this period. The existing condition photos show that all of this original material, with its interesting trimwork and texture, has been either concealed or lost, leaving the historic entrance portico and front door looking like leftovers from another building. The scale and color, the scale and color of the concrete block enclosing the base of the porch do not seem appropriate for a freestanding house of this age and style. The detailing of the aluminum siding resembles the material used for freestanding industrial sheds. The dormer windows have lost their arched heads and their keystones. And while a stair railing, which would match the railings which now surround the porch, could possibly be found, it won't bring the building any closer to its original appearance. The VSNY recommends denial. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. And up next, I have Simeon from HDC, which I will bring in. You should be in the meeting now. You can start whenever. Simeon, are you there?
Simeon, I believe you're on mute. I am on mute. I thought I muted myself. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you very much, Anthony. Simeon Baikoff, Historic District Council. HDC notes that in the historic photograph provided, there's a nice wooden balustrade, which is no longer in evidence. In truth, the historic photo should be used as a guide to correct what has happened to this poor building. As is often the case, we do not believe that the Landmarks Preservation Commission would permit these changes if proposed legally, and the same standard must, must apply here. The metal railing on the porch is completely unacceptable. The aluminum siding on the facade should be replaced with wood and proper materials, and we are frankly bewildered by the prominence of the bright white downstairs. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have some other folks who've raised their hands. I will bring in Lori. Lori, you should be in the meeting now.
Yes, hello. Okay, I have nothing prepared, but I must say, I am a neighbor and I am a past community board member of Community Board 14 for the past 40 years. This house was in complete disrepair. It was an eyesore for the neighborhood. I understand the need to keep preservation as I also live in a historic district. But given today's cost constraints and remodeling in terms of pure historic value are absolutely enormous. You're talking about a single woman who has very limited resources. I believe the work she did was absolutely lovely. It's definitely an improvement. It, if you don't have a comparison in front of you of the pictures, one would not realize that it was out of place. It's totally appropriate and it certainly enhances the neighborhood. I would ask the Commissioners to please be pragmatic, understand the circumstances, and grant a little leeway in knowing that it is a major improvement for the area. I thank you.
Thank you. And we have one other person who's raised her hand, and that is Edward. And I am bringing him in now. Edward, you are in the meeting. You just have to unmute yourself and turn on your camera if you wish to. Edward, are you there?
Oh, hey, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, okay, thank you. Hello, everybody. My name's Edward Casarino. I live around the corner from Ms. Giuliano at 60 Turner Place. Uh, I've been there about 10 years and I do recall seeing this house looking like it was ready to collapse. She did, uh, for a single woman, I, she did a great job. And I think it really is a big improvement. And, uh, you know, I think we just, uh, it, it looks great and it might not match every house in the neighborhood, but it is an absolute big improvement. And I think we should, uh, take that into consideration. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That is it for people wishing to testify.
All right, thank you, Anthony. And Rich, do we have any additional written testimony?
We do. We received four letters in support from other nearby neighbors and Brooklyn Community Board 14 weighed review of the application.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so I'd like to actually turn back to the owner and see if you would like to respond to some of the comments we heard in testimony, particularly with respect to the materials and their appropriateness in the district and details.
Yes, okay. So now, I bought this house in 1991, I believe, 1991. So I'm not sure, but I thought I heard one of the Commissioners or somebody say that there was a major, um, changes, which wasn't true. So I, I could have gotten that wrong. You have to look at the pictures from when I purchased the house. I didn't rip nothing off. If anything, stuff fell apart. But I didn't change the windows. The windows are exactly the same. And I'm not sure of those, what he was speaking about, the top windows? Maybe you could repeat it for me? What did he say? That I changed the structure of the windows? I didn't touch any windows. So, can, so I can understand more clearly?
Yeah, I, I, if there was a comment that the windows at the dormers at the top floor have changed, I think your, your response is that you didn't change the size or, or when, uh, the windows within the opening, correct?
Correct. I didn't touch those at all. That is exactly how they were since I bought it in 1991.
Okay, and we, we can see the designation photograph on this slide next to the current photograph.
Okay, so, yeah, I lifted the porch, put the slate back, changed the railing, and put on the siding. That's all I did.
All right, all right, Commissioners, do we have any final questions? Okay, I do see there's a hand raised. Anthony, is that somebody who already spoke, maybe still has their hand up?
No, that's a new person who just raised her hand. I can, I can bring them in.
Yeah, why don't we allow her to speak before we close the hearing?
Okay, Victoria, I am bringing you into the meeting. You're in the meeting now. You just have to unmute yourself and turn on your camera if you wish to.
Okay. Anthony, we can. All right.
Just remove them.
Yeah, well, thank you very much. All right, so we'll, we'll move on here. And I think Commissioners, if there are no final questions, we'll start to unmute everybody so that we can take a motion to close the hearing and begin our discussion. So Commissioner Holford Smith, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
Removed.
And Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion?
I so second.
All right, thank you. And all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion now. And so this is, again, another situation, a situation where somebody, a homeowner, was trying to maintain their property and invested in work that they believed was in the best interest of their property. And it was done without the benefit of our guidance and our, our process. And so we are, it obviously can't be approved at staff level. It's before us today. We're going to be looking at the replacement of the vinyl siding that was there at the time of designation and, and installing new vinyl siding. It was exposed wood in the period in the interim, and we've heard comments about that, the condition of the wood. And then also the changes to the portico, the railings, and the porch, and the change in materials on, on those features. So we'll begin our discussion, both the facade as well as the porch work. Commissioner Devonshire, would you like to start?
Not really, but I get, I'm slightly confused, Sarah. Did you say that the vinyl siding was on there at the time of designation?
So there was vinyl siding at the time of designation. It, and they took it off and they were, I think, hoping to restore the wood. The wood was deteriorated. And instead of replacing it in wood, they put new vinyl siding up.
And, and at no time was the LPC consulted for any of this work.
Yeah, Marcela, you'll have to confirm that and whether there were permits in the first instance that didn't get amended or whether that none of the work was approved by us.
And then that was existing vinyl siding at the time of designation.
So that stuff in the picture with the white is vinyl siding?
I, it's not currently existing at the building, obviously. I believe we, I spoke with the, the homeowner. That was the, that was the case previously, was vinyl siding removed to expose the wood. And then obviously new, new vinyl, new siding installed it that we see now.
And it, it could very well be that it was a metal siding, but it was definitely a wider lap than the wood claverts that are presumably in the historic photo from earlier than that. So I think it may be unclear exactly what it was, but it was a synthetic siding at time of designation covering the smaller exposed wood siding.
So, there was an artificial siding on the facade of this house at the time of designation. It was replaced with artificial siding, but without the assistance of the LPC. So, but the question is, would this have been approved had they come to us with an application to replace artificial siding with artificial siding?
That's correct.
In, in, in my book of adjudication, what I would have said is, if you're replacing it with another artificial siding, then the artificial siding that would be appropriate would be a cement board, not vinyl siding. And so what I would say is, I can, I can live with the changes on the porch, although I, I agree that the, the vinyl balustrade on the steps should be replaced. But I believe that the vinyl siding on the front facade of the building should be replaced either with wood, with cement board.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, so this is a tough one. This is, uh, you know, you have the, the historic photos that you couldn't, I'm not sure exactly if that's the case. But I, I take the applicant's word for it. And so I'm in the same quandary as the rest of the Commissioners about, you know, what do you do with a case like this? But, but I can, I can accept it, given the, you know, the current situation.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Bland?
Aye, aye, aye. Well, I think Commissioner Devonshire actually asked the questions and then, and then framed the argument in a way that I understood it better as well. It seems so harsh to say, rip it all off again and put a new material on. But if you take away the sympathetic homeowner's plight, which is hard to do, maybe impossible to do, then you would go with what Commissioner Devonshire said, which is hardy board or something like that would be a more appropriate material. So I guess I'm trying to be dispassionate and say, that's what this house, which is a handsome house, which has apparently been through the wringer and back, or still in the wringer, trying to bring it back, replacing it with the, the right-sized clapboard, whether it's wood or some synthetic material, I suppose, is all right. I don't know, it's just a quandary. So, anyway, I guess in that camp.
All right, Commissioner Lutfi?
This has been a rough day. Maybe we should put all of these things together. Um, this is, okay. Yeah, I have a question. Do you see that the bottom window on the front is not a one-over-one window? And was that window one-over-one when the, or were those windows one-over-one to begin with?
My understanding is that the Enforcement Department determined those to be the condition at the time of designation. And I think as the owner stated, that she, she had not replaced any of the windows. So that designation photo shows ironwork in front of those particular windows, making it difficult to see what was back there. But I think that determination was made that, that those were the conditions at time of designation.
Okay. Yeah, this, this building was really lovely, especially when it was built. And it has elements now that have retained its handsomeness. But there are some things that are big problems. I actually, not only do I think the railing going down the stairs has to be changed, but I, I'm having a problem with the railing at the top of the stairs that goes around the front of the house.
There at designation.
Yeah, it doesn't have enough weight to, I don't know, it doesn't have enough weight to balance out the, the structure of the house. And I just, I don't think I can approve that, no matter what. Of course, I would love this to not be vinyl siding, period. Is there any way that, how long does vinyl siding last? I know this is probably a.
Beyond, beyond, beyond the, what do they call the era that we're in now? The human era? Well, we are when cockroaches have won and we are all dust.
Okay, so maybe we could, maybe a good solution would be to replace the siding on the front of the house. And, and allow the vinyl siding to remain on the side. It's not as prominent. I, I'm just trying to come up with some solutions here.
Yeah.
Stop smirking, Michael. I also, I have to say, this is a minor thing. The front door has to be painted. So that, again, it's not, there's not something that is glaring. And, I mean, that's my, those are my suggestions.
Okay, all right, thank you. Commissioner Jefferson?
If we just replace the front facade with cement board and leave the other three facades where they are, especially if it's visible on the sides, I don't think that's going to help it much. I mean, help the structure of this building much. And I, it almost seems to me to just leave it the way it is and work with the, with the entry, you know, make the, the metal railing is so weak. Is there any way of bringing it back to some dignity? Because I, I would just leave it pretty much the way it is, and I have no solution for this. There's no way that I, I think putting it on the facade would not help much, and leaving the sides the way they are, I don't know what I would do. So my position is just leave it, you know. Change the handrail. It would be nicer if it would, I mean, it would just give it some heft at the base. But that's my thoughts.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Gustafson?
I think I agree with Commissioner Devonshire. I think, I thought he was making the same suggestion that Commissioner Lutti made, which was replace the material on the front of the house, and that's it.
No, I think Commissioner Devonshire, I believe you were talking about all of the facades, correct? No, just the front?
Just the front.
Is the most.
Okay.
Okay, so, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the, aside from the railing that goes down the stairs, the rest of it was there at designation, right? So we're not even on that.
That's correct. That railing around the perimeter of the porch was there at time of designation.
Okay. So then I agree, and I agree with Commissioner Devonshire. I'm done.
Okay. Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Sarah, she's, I think she had to.
She stepped away. Okay. Commissioner Holford Smith?
Yeah, this has been a tough day. But I think I agree with Commissioner Devonshire that replacing the front would at least bring it back to a closer resemblance of its original proportion of the siding.
Okay. And?
And the railing. Get rid of the.
And the stoop railing?
Yeah.
Okay. And Commissioner Chapin?
I, you know, I really appreciate the fact that this owner is trying to do the best they could. It's too bad that they did not, you know, interact with us so that we wouldn't be at this point. I think that the front of the house really does need some kind of non-vinyl planning, you know, that looks more like the original, as many other commissioners have said. I feel less concerned about the railing, but returning to the original, obviously the applicant said they were willing to, and everyone else feels that that, you know, would be an improvement. I actually agree with Commissioner Lutti about a minor point, which is that having the, like, very red door is calling attention to the house in a way that's not particularly helpful to it. Perhaps it could be something like a burgundy or something, which would still achieve the same sort of color, you know, palette in effect that the applicant was looking for, but with, which would not, you know, would fit in a little better, be a little more harmonious. Something no one else has mentioned that I'm concerned about is, those are roof drains, right? They're coming down, right down the front of the house. To me, those are more intrusive than almost anything else, and I'm wondering if those roof drains couldn't be off to the side or something, you know, instead of coming right down by the pillars? Because I think that actually disrupts the front of the house more than almost anything else. So, you know, throwing in another issue there, but it's, it was very striking to me, because it is a lovely house, really. So those are my comments.
All right. And Commissioner Goldblum?
Okay. Well, I agree with the general sentiment to modify the front facade and leave the sides alone. All I would suggest to kind of add to that is, is that they look very carefully at both the 1940s tax photo and at the photo that shows what this house looked like before or underneath the metal or whatever siding that we see in this designation photo, and use that as a template for how the hardy board is applied, that it just shouldn't be slathered on like paint, but that it should have a level of detail, similar to what we saw in the previous image, go back to the previous image there, where you have a level of development that, one, recognizes the fact that there was a porch there, two, breaks it up and makes it more horizontal, three, adds some detail around the dormer windows, all of which you can do for nickels and dimes in hardy board. And what you also notice with this is that the leaders are placed directly on top of the corner boards, which makes them a lot less noticeable, even if you stick with the blue and white palette, it will just be a lot less garish. I mean, this was a lovely, lovely house. And the other thing I would say is, the use of concrete block, dry-laid concrete block for the porch, that is not in my limited understanding of historic material. And I would suggest that it be either covered over with stucco or with wood or with the hardy board. If you look on the 1940s tax photo, I believe that they had like blind, segmental arches in them that tied into some trim elements. And, you know, people talk about railings. Building a railing out of wood like that doesn't cost a whole lot, you know? It's just a carpenter and a couple of days, and you can do it. And it should not be a major cost thing. That said, I think that in light of the melodrama associated with this project, I think we can give them a long, long time to turn it around.
Okay, thank you. All right. So I think that where we are is that the majority of commissioners could support an approval with modifications to replace the vinyl siding on the front facade with a fiber cement board or wood, and to replace the porch railings with the appropriate material as well, and to reconsider the paint color for the door. And I think in addition, we can ask them to explore the finish of the concrete block around the porch and, you know, encourage them to think about replacing the fence that was there at the time of designation. But I think the approval for the modification is primarily the replacing the siding on the front and the railings on the stoop, and we'll work with them on trying to encourage the other changes. So Commissioner Devonshire, would you make that motion?
I'll try.
It's mostly there for you, so.
In the matter of LPC 2004-817, 152 Trattford Road, in the Prospect Lefferts Garden Historic District, an application to legalize alterations to the front and side facades and porch without LPC Commission permits, I recommend approval with some modifications. Finding that the removal of nonhistoric siding did not destroy any significant historic fabric or building feature, but the synthetic siding at the side and rear facades does not call attention to itself or detract from the significant historic features of the building, that the historic underlying wood siding is deteriorated beyond repair, that the replacement siding of these facades more closely recalls the scale of historic clavard siding which had been covered prior to designation, that the adjacent houses on this block are clad in a variety of materials, not all of which are historic, therefore the change in material on the secondary facades does not diminish the overall character of the block, that the porch and porch paving were heavily altered prior to designation, and re-cladding and repaving of the prior constructed porch eliminated unsympathetic alterations that detracted from the significant architectural features of the building, that the applicant will remove and replace nonhistoric handrails at the porch steps with a simply designed black finished metal handrail, thus eliminating unsympathetic alterations that detract from the significant architectural features of the building, that the masonry block cladding is plain and non-decorative, and the claddings are neutral finishes that do not call undue attention to these features, and that the proposed work will not diminish the special architecture of character or historic character of the buildings or the Prospect Lefferts Historic Garden. However, I find that the vinyl siding at the primary facade calls undue attention to itself and detracts from the significant historic features of the building, as does the replication handrail at the stoop. Therefore, I recommend that the vinyl siding of the primary facade be removed and a material that better relates to the material of the historic house be installed in its place, such as wood or painted fiber cement board, and details from and finish of the new siding be refined in consultation with the staff as well as the step handrails.
Great, thank you. And Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second it.
Great. And Rich, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron not present. Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutti? Commissioner Lutti, you're on mute.
Aye.
Thank you. And Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
Okay, with ten in favor and one opposed, and one not present, the motion carries.
Okay, so that's approved with those modifications. And as you continue to work with the staff on the details of the, and the materials for the siding and the porch, please also consider the rest of the railing that was there at the time of designation. It's maybe an opportunity to address that as well, so we'd encourage you to think about that, as well as the finish of the concrete blocks. Thank you. And we'll move to the next item.
The next item is number three, LPC 21-04301, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block 15, lot 7501, 17 Battery Place, the Whitehall Building individual landmark. This is a neo-renaissance style office building designed by Henry J. Hardenberg and built in 1902 to 04, with an addition designed by Clinton and Russell and built in 1908 to 10. The application is to replace entrance info.
Commissioners, the applicants have joined the hearing. Please state your name for the record. You now have control of the presentation, and you may begin. So Alexandra, you just need to click on the title screen that you see there, and then you can advance to the presentation.
Okay. Hello, everybody. Can I go back? Here we go. Okay. Hello, everybody. My name is Alexandra Cuba. I'm a director for Biddy Finger, and I would like to present the removal and replacement of the existing storefront at 17 Battery Place. 17 Battery Place is located at the south tip of Manhattan, a prominent location overlooking Battery Park, a neo-renaissance style building, beautiful, and has, because of this, in instructed lighting air, also a very visual and very visible location. So quickly, a little historic journey. It was built, as already mentioned, 1902 to 1904, and it was a success in terms of office buildings, and they decided right away to, once this was completed, to add an extension, which was built 1908 to 1910. So this little red square shows you the scope of our, of our work, which I'm going to present to you right now. Just quickly taking you a little tour of how it looks today. So coming from Battery Park, you see like the three arched moments in the beautiful limestone facade. On the left here is the residential entrance, and the middle and the right is the commercial entrance. So you see in the, in the middle here, there is a little pathway, because the storefront was pushed back. I unfortunately don't know when that, when that happened, but at the designation in 2000, I think it was already in process that the whole facade was pushed back, and so the whole storefront we are replacing is not at the front, it's actually in the back. So you can see on the right side, the entrance to the, to the commercial entrance. So quickly, take me a little bit on a tour. Once you step up the stairs, you can see that there is more or less an eclectic visual here of the storefront. I think it was changed over time, adjusted, and hodgepodge a little bit. So you can see this, this pathway connecting to the residential lobby. You can also see this big beam transversing that facade, which is a beam, we probed it, and it's actually not needed anymore. It's a kind of a leftover if we remove that storefront. You also see here like a little ceiling popping down, so it's like lower, then it pops up, and then it has this little walkway. So also you can see some additional lighting here, and it looks a little bit like, you know, it definitely needs some, some love and some redesign. So our client, who is a very good steward of the, of the building, asked us to look at this and clean it up and, and make it a bit, not only cleaner and simpler, keeping it modern and timeless, but as we're not touching anything off the front, beautiful front facade, we're not touching any historic fabric, our approach will be more on the modern side and the clean and simple side. You can here see from, from the other side of the street, these are the elements we're going to take out and replace. Also this big beam transversing this, this view here, these upper windows are to remain. So what we, what we're trying to do is a little bit taking, taking notice of what was there before, which is this, this dark bronze aluminum windows. And right now you can see a brass here, stainless steel here, so we really want to bring back that, that old kind of finish here, the dark bronze, and also getting a bit inspired by the historic photos, that there is, there should be more of a marching kind of million with a higher horizontal million to kind of do a kind of, a nod to the historic situation. Also here you can see a little close-up of the entrance, lots going on, lower ceiling, light fixtures, and a beam which then kind of goes from white to, to a smaller beam and some, some kind of other support. So all of this we are planning to remove, also this, this higher ceiling, this lower ceiling here, and really clean it up and, and really not take away from the facade, rather keep it quiet and calm and simple to enhance this, this beautiful facade and not have like this beam running through it. So that gets me to our proposal. So as you can see here, we're really trying to simplify it, clean it up, still have a million with a higher million here, which allows us to raise the entrance, give also the entrance a bit more of a, of a bigger, bigger moment. Also refinishing those, those railings here, also in this bronze, in this, in this dark bronze metal, and, and creating a very symmetric kind of storefront in that kind of frame, which, which is set back and it's a bit more quiet and really, really stresses more the facade and rather than the storefront. So really trying to clean it up rather than creating something loud in the background. So there's also existing stone outside here, we're bringing it in and calming it down, we're not doing anything to the historic limestone. We are taking, we're taking notice of the existing window frame finish and making the storefront a dark anodized aluminum storefront to really matching this finish and creating a more cohesive look. So here, just quickly a look at how this looks. Once it's cleaned up, the ceiling is consistent, the storefront is just a marching clean millions with a higher horizontal million and a very simple revolving door. So in the end, we're replacing the storefront at its current location, and this is just a look back. And as you can see, we, we really trying to clean this up and creating a bit more, more homogenous look. Quickly plans and elevations, as you can see where the old storefront was, it's here, how this is actually looking at the, at the elevation. And then when I show you the new one, it's, the location doesn't change, but the storefront just becomes a simpler and cleaner version of, of what was there before. And last but not least, I'm, I'm also showing. And last but not least, I'm also showing you the elevation from inside, which is probably not so important for you. But we can show you that we're also removing this kind of dropped ceiling, which was kind of a leftover from renovations over time and really creating a more cleaner ceiling inside and also outside in the pathway. And also the kind of giving back of the views from inside outside without this big obstruction which we had before. And in overall, client is very happy with the result. And I'm hoping, you know, it also improves the historic elements. And this is just a very regular stick system in aluminum. You can see here details, typical details. And you can see it's just very, very clean and simple. So that actually concludes my presentation. And yeah, if I have any question, I'm happy to answer.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioners, do we have any questions at this time? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands raised. So we'll move to testimony and we may have questions after that. So if you're in the meeting and would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand so we can identify you. And I'm gonna turn it over to our Director of Intergovernmental and Community Affairs, Anthony Fabre, to walk us through the testimony.
Thank you, Sarah. We do have one sign up and that is John Graham and I'll bring him in now. John, you should be in the meeting.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. John Graham for the Victorian Society. The applicant for this project is proposing two distinct changes to this individual landmark. One which the VSNY finds totally appropriate and a second which we see is a major lost opportunity. The appropriate work is the removal of the undistinguished modern storefront infill set behind the historic masonry openings from two of the three entrance bays. The lost opportunity is the applicant's proposal to install equally undistinguished modern infill in its place. The photographs which the applicant has provided clearly show that the historic infill at the three entrance bays was made up of wide framing members and mullions which closely matched the proportions of the framing and mullions still in place at the arched tripartite windows above the eastern and western entrances. In addition, the framing at the ground floor appears very similar to the proportions of the frames at the historic paired windows on the upper floors. We have attached a photo dated 1905 to our written testimony that more clearly shows the original infill. We recommend that the applicant redesign the proposed storefront infill based on the design proportions, materials and details of the historic storefront infill and of the historic window framing members still in place at this individual landmark, thereby resulting in an entrance that conforms stylistically to the rest of the building. When the modern infill at the third entrance bay fails, the revised design may be used as a template for new infill. Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any other hands raised. So I think that's it for testimony.
Okay, thank you. And Rich, do we have any written testimony?
We do have a resolution from Manhattan Community Board, one recommending approval.
Okay, thank you. All right. Would you like to, I'm gonna turn back to the applicant. Would you like to respond to the testimony?
I'm trying to understand a little bit. They are requesting to replace it to its original location?
I think they think this is a missed opportunity and would like to see the infill be returned to the openings.
Yeah, I only know that there's also an ADA lift right now here on this side built. And I think all this work was done on a different application, left-hand application. And this hallway also is now used as an ADA entrance to the commercial lobby. So I think it's, it would be a pretty, probably a bigger undertaking to create and move everything to the front as it has other implications.
Okay. All right, Commissioners, any other questions? Okay, so I'm gonna start to unmute you. Oh, yes, Commissioner Letfy, please go ahead. Commissioner Letfy, did you have a question?
Commissioner Letfy, you're still muted.
Am I still muted?
Now you're, we can hear you now.
Okay. So I'm just wondering for the applicant, in looking at trying to improve and unify and streamline the front of this building, both in terms of the storefronts and the entrances, why we're not looking at both doors on each side of that storefront? Because it looks like what you're presenting is three different openings here or three different, you know, two different doors than a different storefront. And I'm not understanding what the rationale is behind that in terms of enhancing what's there.
Yeah, I think it's probably is, you know, financial that they now wanna do this portion because it's two different entrances, residential and in commercial and probably because you're also going for this very low traffic time. Right now there's a DMV. They wanna really take advantage of this low traffic situation and do a renovation of the lobby and enhance the storefront, like make this right now and focus on that side. The client actually mentioned that they are open to refinish the residential side to match the commercial side. That was actually raised once we already had that application in the works. So we didn't add that, but with our LPC contact, they said we can add that later on. It's just probably financially that we can, it's a big undertaking to renovate that lobby and the storefront that they will focus on this now. And then once time comes and they wanna redo the storefront on the residential, they will follow what we have done on the right side to match also the finishes and the look. For now, what you see now, you have three different walls. So you have the brass, you have the stainless steel and you have the old existing bronze metal aluminum finish. So what he's trying to do is to at least do the first right step and creating a better entrance on the commercial side and then hopefully eventually also follow suit on the other side. I think it's a timing and financial situation here.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Jefferson.
Two questions. One, is this a master plan? Is that what you're saying that if we approve the right-hand side of the image, the left-hand side will be exactly the same? So this is the master plan for dealing with the whole entry? That's A. And B, the alignment of the new and the existing, they're slightly off. Why is that?
Well, the thing is that what we did is, this is a higher million because it was before it was in the middle. So looking at historic photos, the horizontal million is higher. So what we did is, in order to not be totally off, we aligned the million with the top of the residential million to still tie it in, but create an overall more reference to the historic situation than just following this lower horizontal million, which in the end proportionally just seemed odd to have this million running in the center of the square. And if you look at historic photos, the horizontal million was higher. So we wanted to take the opportunity, raise it, also create a higher revolving door here and still, you know, be aligned with this as a top on the top of the beam.
So that means that when you do the left-hand side, the residential section, you have to follow that exactly if the facade's gonna be. So essentially this is the master plan to that.
Yes, I would assume, yes.
Commissioner Jefferson, this application before you though is not for a master plan. It is only for the approval of this two-thirds of.
No, I understand that. I'm just trying to make a consistency for the future. So, you know, five years from now, 10 years from now, the alignments will be off now. So in terms of the facade itself, the whole proposition of this facade, I'm just trying to make, so that we're sure that at some point the alignments would be right. That's all.
You know, perhaps we could maybe also look at a photograph to just sort of understand how you perceive these relationships. You know, they're up a stair and then behind what is now an arcade. So just to sort of understand how you perceive these relationships, it might be helpful to have a photo. And in the meantime, we'll go to Commissioner Holford Smith.
Yes, my question, actually, these photos are good because in this image on page five, you can see that there's like a dropped infill at the stone surround. Looks like it's on the two outer openings. And perhaps it was put there in relationship to this dropped ceiling. And I wondered if there's an opportunity now to remove that. It looks like it was an added, if you go to page five. Yeah, you can see it there. Yeah, 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 I can see it in the right-hand photo as well. Looks like it's an added, maybe stucco within the original masonry opening. I wonder if that could be explored to be removed. You may have to do a probe to see what's there.
It's called out as an existing stone portal to remain.
Right. But I don't think it's stone. I think it's always stucco. Or it could have been faced in stone when they did it, but I don't think it's original. The one on the left-hand side is not as deep. You see, it's there, but it's not as deep.
That's probably something doable.
Yeah, it would be great. It would help.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, so I don't think if there are any, if I think there are no other questions, we'll move to close the hearing and begin our discussion. So Commissioner Goldblum, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
Move to close the hearing.
And Commissioner Bland, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Okay, hearing is closed. All right, and Commissioner Shamir Baron, oh, sorry, Commissioner Jefferson, would you like to start this one?
It's approvable when I saw it last night and I looked at it. And when I'm looking at it today, I was concerned about the symmetry of the central bay and whether the future would be, the symmetry would be there. If that's the case, I can approve this and the alignments are all correct. And I do think that my fellow commissioner came up with a good point of trying to remove some of the extra pieces that suffered in fascia that's there. That should be studied some more, I think.
Okay, great, thank you. Commissioner Gustafson?
Yeah, my line is I'm in favor of this as is. I think it's cleaning up a lot of mess that is there currently. And it is setting.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Holford Smith?
Yeah, I think this is overall is an improvement. It'll make it a much quieter background and hopefully the stones will read more prominently. And I just encourage the applicant to look into removing those inner portals and help further clean up the stone masonry.
Okay, and Commissioner Chapin?
I actually feel a little differently on this one. I do appreciate the effort to clean up and use the bronze and also the interior changes and the intent that they have, I think is excellent. But, you know, from my point of view, I would really like to see it reference the historical condition a little more, which would mean the center transom over the front, the entry door would have the same configuration as the two sides. And there would be somewhat heavy, and that the framing that comes down would align with those upper transom months, I guess they are. So that they, there was more relationship between the top and the bottom and that there would be somewhat heavier framing in particularly the center door. So that it, because of the original, would have had much heavier framing. I don't think it has to be as heavy as the original in any way. But I feel that this just looks to me extremely light and somewhat inappropriate. Just, it doesn't, from my point of view, have enough historical reference. And I think they could do more in that direction with some fairly minor changes and still having a lot of open expanse for their storefront. Because they're not suggesting extremely heavy, but, you know, heavier.
Okay, I mean, I think that the approach was to do something light and minimalist that was set, because it's set so far behind the openings and to allow it to sort of clean up and allow you to read the masonry better. So I think some commissioners were okay with that. But, so I just wanna understand how much you'd want them to actually thicken up that framing as it may affect others, the direction that others are supporting.
The other thing is, is I'd actually like to see the middle frame, the, in other words, they've taken, by taking the, changing the upper transom, they've changed the whole sort of proportions of how that's working. And to me, all three should work in the same fashion and so that you have the verticals coming down in a similar location. And I don't, do you see what I'm talking about?
I do, I do. They're in a different plane, but I do see in elevation, you'd like to have that relationship.
That's, yeah, I feel that that would be more reflective of the historic configuration.
But. Right, yeah. I mean, I think their approach is to do something like a minimal wall that doesn't read like the historic fabric because it's in such a setback location behind the original location of storefronts.
Yeah, I understand, sir. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Goldblum?
Yeah, I'm okay with the general design of the proposed wall in the location where it is. I think that the loggia idea, once it's set back like that, it's so divorced from the original configuration that I feel less compelled about trying to recall that historic facade. But I think in general, it's okay. I think we should take them up on their offer to change the color on the residential entrance. Now, it'll at least calm it down and quiet it down. And I think that Anne's ideas is great about getting rid of those arch, those stone inner arches or whatever they're made of. The one thing that I would suggest to the applicant as an extra, not that we can request it, require it, is that central, the central arched window that is bronze, bronze anodized aluminum, that's the one place where the historic material, in my opinion, should be replaced. And I don't believe they're changing the scope there. So I don't think we can ask them to do that or require them to do that. But I would strongly urge them to take that center window and make that similar to the historic configuration that was, you see to the left and right of it.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Devonshire?
Thank you, Sarah. I'm generally in agreement with this, but I also agree with Anne Holford Smith about that sort of extraneous infill. And I agree with Michael about that arched transom.
Okay. Commissioner Chen?
Diana wants to say something. I'll go first.
Yes, Diana.
Just meant that, that's what I meant as well, the arched window. What I was referring to, thinking about is the transom.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, I'm in agreement with most of the comment, including the one from Commissioner Gustafson.
Okay, and Commissioner Bland?
Yeah, I'm fine with the whole notion and concept of this proposal. It's set so. It's set so far back, which I accept as a given at this point, that it's a different, um, architectural vocabulary. And I think that's appropriate. We've, we've done this a lot. I just also want to note, you know, there's a kinetic enjoyment of architecture, which, um, means that a lot of these alignments that one sees and, and tears apart in a, in an elevation are completely unreadable, unknowable in actuality. So we would never know what's happening over on the left-hand side unless it's right against, you know, as a, as a window, as it, as it once was, and then important. Now it's not important since it's so, so far back. But I think it's fine the way it is. I accept the, the, a couple of comments too that have been added as, as good ideas.
All right, great, thank you. And Commissioner Lutti?
I think I have a different feeling about this than everybody. Is this, is this building a landmark?
Yes, it is. It's an individual landmark.
I guess I feel like when you're looking at the front of any significant building, um, architecturally, and you're going to be making changes to entrances and, and windows, that it's important to look at the whole thing holistically. And we have a lot of building owners that come to us and they do that. They, they give us master plans. They show us how things are going to look, even if they phase them in over time. This is, uh, an important enough building so that I feel this particular, uh, owner, really owes it to the building and, and to, uh, to show us that. And, and I feel that what we've gotten is a hodgepodge. And, and I just don't accept that. And I'm surprised we're accepting that. We wouldn't accept it from Rockefeller Center. We wouldn't accept it from so many landmark buildings in this city. So I would vote no against this.
Okay. All right. So, I mean, I think what's different here is because it is set back in this unusual location that people have been comfortable with it, the, the change it's proposed. And I think also the applicant did indicate that the other side would eventually match this. So the approval, if not a formal master plan, would establish for the record that this is what it, what needs to happen on the other side when it is, when that side is changed. Or they'd have to come back to a public hearing.
Right, I appreciate that, but, um, it doesn't matter.
Okay, all right. Okay, so, um, I think where we are is that we have many commissioners and maybe enough, um, for an approval today for, um, for, for an approval with modifications to approve the, the proposed infill in concept, but with some modifications to the color at the residential entrance, cleaning up the sort of inner arches soffit and, um, and, you know, and, uh, I think with the intention that this would serve as the model for the other portions. And, um, finally, you know, encouraging while not required modification, the replacement of the center arched window. So Commissioner Goldblum, would you make this motion? Really the modifications of the color and the, um, the soffits and inner arch, cleaning up the soffits and inner arches. And then we'll also encourage them to, to think about this as a master plan and think about that arched window.
Okay. Regarding 17 Battery Place, the Whitehall Building, an individual landmark, the application is to replace entrance infill. I note that the modification to the entrance, including installing recessed infill stairs and railings, was performed pursuant to a building department permit issued prior to designation and that the designation report notes that the construction was ongoing at the eastern commercial entrance. I recommend approval with modifications, finding that the proposed work will not eliminate or conceal any significant architectural features, that the proposed infill will be installed in the same plane as the existing recessed infill, entrance infill, set back from the masonry facade, thereby helping it remain a subordinate presence, that the profiles, details and proportions of the infill featuring tall revolving doors flanked by single doors and a metal glass, metal and glass curtain wall with horizontal and vertical mullions will be compatible with the historic portions of the ground floor while clearly reading as a contemporary installation, that the removal of a portion of the dropped soffit in front of the doors will return a consistent ceiling height at this recessed vestibule, which will provide uniformity, that the dark bronze anodized finish of the new infill and refinished stair railings will be in keeping with existing and historic metal finish at this building, and that the work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of this individual landmark. However, the applicant will work with staff to, one, change the color of the otherwise untouched residential entrance metals to match the proposed new color, the dark bronze. Two, to remove the, uh, inner archway additions, the modern inner archway additions at the two, uh, entrances with stairs. Three, that the applicant will, uh, work with the staff to, um, uh, view the work that's being done on the two entrances under consideration as a master plan for the third, uh, the residential entrance that is not now being significantly modified. And lastly, the applicant will, uh, the applicant will consider, uh, the possibility of replacing the arched central second floor window to match those to either side of it.
Okay, and Commissioner Chapin, would you second that motion?
Second.
Okay, Rich, will you call the vote?
Sheriff Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutti?
Nay.
And Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
Now, I don't believe that Commissioner Shamir Baron is in the meeting again, right?
Correct.
Okay, so at nine in favor, one opposed, and one not present, the motion carries.
Okay, so that's approved with those modifications. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and we'll move to the last item of the day, public hearing item number four, LPC 19-39118, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Road Manhattan Block 587, Lot 21. 61 Seventh Avenue South and the Greenwich Village Historic District Extension 2, two altered row houses originally built, uh, in 1832. The application is to modify an opening and install a ramp.
And Commissioners, um, the applicants and, um, have joined the hearing. Staff will be walking through this proposal, um, with some additional statements and availability for questions from the applicants.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Emma Waterloo Preservation Staff. The application before you today is for 61 Seventh Avenue South, located at the southeast corner of the intersection of Seventh Avenue South and Bleecker Street in the Greenwich Village Historic District Extension 2. This is an existing condition photograph of the building. The proposal is to widen an entrance on the Bleecker Street facade located over here and install a barrier-free access ramp. The restaurant owner would like to say a few words before I take you through the details of this proposal. Mr. Burke, if you could make sure that you are unmuted and state your name for the record, you can begin. Thank you. Mr. Burke, I believe you are muted.
A second. All right, can you hear us now?
Yes, thank you so much.
Here you go. Sorry, that was my wife. Um, my name is Howard Burke. I built the restaurant in 1983. We've been there for, I guess it's 37 years. We are here today as applicants based on several ADA litigations, lawsuits. One is pending currently. Um, it's been going on for over two years. We've tried to research and find the, the most viable solution for this problem so that we can comply with these, um, all the ADA regulations. My architect, Kim Sippel, will speak. He'll give the technical side of the presentation. And he'll, he'll underscore the efforts that we use to research and develop the, the, the best possible solution for this problem. If I can, if I can, um, put any more further light on this during the presentation, please get me back.
All right, thank you, Mr. Burke.
Thank you, guys. Bye.
Following are selection of existing conditions photographs as well as historic photographs of the building illustrating its evolution over time. By the time of the 1980s tax photograph, most of the original features had been stripped. And here's the designation photograph of the building. As a reminder, this is a site plan of the building and the work will occur on the Bleecker Street facade over here. Now we are walking around to the Bleecker Street facade. And this is a detailed shot of the entrance to be modified. Here are the existing and proposed plans. The door will be widened 16 inches to help accommodate the side light and the turning radius for the proposed ramp. The walking surface of the ramp will be a gray fiberglass so that it can hinge to provide access to the existing basement hatch and the sidewalk at this location. So here's the existing conditions elevation as well as the proposed conditions elevation. The proposed door will match the design of the previously approved door on Seventh Avenue South. And the railing will match the grill work at the door in terms of design. For reference, here is a photograph of that door that already exists on Seventh Avenue South. And here is the materials palette for the proposal. The architect, Kim Sippel, is here to discuss the location of the ramp and answer any of your questions. Mr. Sippel?
Uh, hopefully you can all hear me. I'll do my best to explain this. Yeah, we're really trying to work as a balancing act and be sensitive to, I think which is a really important corner to the village and also to Bleecker Street. We looked at all possible locations for a ramp and, uh, because of the sloping sidewalks and that the, the first floor of the existing restaurant, it varies from 15 inches to 22 inches above the grade. This ended up being the, the least obtrusive place we could do, so we're trying to do this balancing act. The building is considered a non-contributing building to the district. What we are trying to do is create a unified base, if I can say that, to try and make it feel like it's part of the area. The sidewalk at that point on Bleecker Street is 12 feet wide. And by enlarging the opening, which takes it back to the original, uh, pier on the side, it allows us to set back the turning radius and therefore no DOT revocable consent requirements kick in for us. There are no encumbrances in that area as far as street trees or signs or meters or anything. The, Mr. Burke does not allow, um, deliveries after 11:00 AM. So, again, when the traffic picks up around lunchtime, there would never be anybody trying to deliver things to the sidewalk hatch and, and so on. Yes, I think it's just simply we're trying to find a solution to, you know, be sensitive to the Disabilities Act, uh, while being sensitive to the building. And we've done our best and we'll look forward to your comments and any ideas you can do to help us. So, we appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioners, do we have any questions? And like, maybe we could go to the elevation or the rendered. So modifying the opening to add the side light and the ramp and the railing. Okay, Commissioner Chapin, please go ahead.
Yeah, I just had a question about, it, it looks sort of like a picket fence type of, uh, you know, fencing. And I wondered if it could be simpler than that, just sort of more like a pipe rail or something? Or is that a requirement for the amount, the height of that particular ramp?
Um, the height requirement, yes, it's a guardrail, so it's 42 inches above the, the platform on the, on the ramp level. Uh, and then it's 15 inches off the grade, so it, it looks taller there. And then it follows a slope of the handrail coming down. There is, I guess, different ideas that, keeping it simpler. A lot of the code says you're supposed to have less than four inches of space for someone to fall through the guardrail. Some people's, I honestly don't know the exact code of if you can get away with that. We actually provided an appendix with pictures of ramps throughout the village. And they vary tremendously. So we looked at all sorts of them, uh, you know, from New School where you have one going down, all these ramps that fill in the infill with like screens and mesh. The New School, which has the very, or Parsons with the kind of modern look. The building right next door to it has the pickets. So, and then there's the City and Country School. And to me, I, after living in the village for 10 years, I loved all the railings and the beautiful ironwork that you see throughout the village. And, um, I've worked and talked with the preservationists extensively and it was kind of my forcefulness that said, if we do these small, uh, iron pickets, they kind of, in a rusted color, that they would hopefully disappear and unify the base while providing safety, um, as the guardrail. Yeah, I'm trying to walk, like I said, a sensitive line of, rather than having this industrial, um, ramp, trying to tie it in a little bit with the character of the building and the restaurant. And that's, was the design idea behind it.
Thank you. That's a very clear exposition of your, uh, your design choice. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. And Commissioner Jefferson? Commissioner Jefferson, you're still muted if you can just accept that request to unmute.
Okay, when I saw this last night, I thought, gee, interesting composition. Trying to keep the horizontal with the vertical linear, uh, composition in the doorway. Then I realized that the doorway is set back, it's really in shadow. All I would be seeing is just the, the handrail by itself. And, and it could be fine, but I, I think you could take a look at that because you're not really seeing the vertical on the doors because they're so far back. It's what, they'll be in shadow most of the time.
Okay. And, and just a follow-up to the two previous questions in terms of your design. What were, what was your thinking about bringing the ironwork down in front of the face of the ramp instead of just onto the top of the ramp?
I guess to make it feel more solid coming down, yet it would allow them to clean underneath and not have it totally solid under there where it can accumulate garbage or ant creatures can wander around under there. So, it was just kind of this screen because the actual ramp will be very thin, about two inches. And, yeah, it was an architectural, like, vocabulary to, to keep it light. And try, I mean, and do our best to hopefully make this disappear as much as possible. That's, again, that's what we're shooting for.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, Commissioners? All right, not seeing any questions at this time. We'll move to public testimony. If you're in the meeting and would like to speak on this item, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you. And I'll now turn it over to Anthony Fabre to walk us through the testimony. And I'll now turn it over to Anthony Fabre to walk us through the testimony.
Hey, um, we have one sign up and um, he's the only person raising his hand, so I'll bring in John. John, you should be in the meeting.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, John Graham for the Victorian Society. Uh, we think that this proposal is a reasonable solution for providing an access ramp for this much altered building. However, we suggest that because the drop from the top of the ramp to sidewalk level is only a few inches, the railing height could be lowered to a handrail level and the vertical pickets could be eliminated. This would result in a more transparent and less visible structure. In other circumstances, a ramp railing design might take its cues from other ironwork on a building, but in this case, there is none. So we believe simpler and more transparent is better. Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Um, there is no one else raising their hand to testify.
Okay, thank you. And Rich, do we have any written testimony?
We do have a resolution from Manhattan Community Board Two, and they recommend that approval.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, any final comments that, from the applicant team on this, after hearing the testimony?
Um, I don't know if Mr. Burke has any comments, um. Yeah, I, go ahead.
Mr. Burke, would you?
Go, go ahead, Howard.
Um, I have no comments, I just wanted to thank everyone, that's it.
And my comment would be, I mean, um, I understand the idea of transparency, but even when you have fewer pickets and these big pipe, larger pipe rails, uh, to me, it starts to look more industrial and, and loses the, the character that uh, kind of a rhythm of materials creates. And again, um, uh, that's what we were shooting for. I mean, I'm open to suggestions. I believe architecture is collaborative and uh, we would love to work with you to make it the best we can for the village. So we're walking that, that sensitive line, like, like we said, so we appreciate everything.
Great, thank you very much. Any final questions, Commissioners?
I just want to commend.
I just want to commend the applicant for dealing with this uh, this sticky issue because ADA issues is becoming a very prevalent problem. And I agree with the statement about the base plate, uh, rodents can even.
Oh, well, we, we just lost you. We didn't hear the last part of what you said.
Okay, uh, the last part is after is bringing the base all the way down, uh, because even with a quarter of an inch, a rodent can hide in there. So it is a practical and logical move.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, so we'll um, make a motion to close the hearing. Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you make that motion?
So moved, can you hear me?
And, thank you, yes. Commissioner Holford Smith, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the hearing is now closed and we'll begin our discussion. Um, and this is a, a, a building I'm sure many of you are familiar with, right on the intersection of Seventh Avenue South and Bleaker Street, stripped of many of its details and really part of the kind of commercial character of, of Seventh Avenue South. Um, so it, the changes here, I think, are more about the uh, character of the streetscape in some ways than its relationship to the building. But let's have a full discussion on the proposed ramp and modification of the door. And let's see how people are feeling about simplicity versus not. Um, and why don't we start with Commissioner Chapin?
Well, I, I found the architect's uh, you know, explanation of, of his choice interesting. Um, because as, as was noted, there are a lot of different ways to approach ramps and, you know, we're maybe often looking at trying to get one that's the most transparent. I actually think that, given that this building is, you know, it's lost most of its character, that having, um, you, you're not really impeding your view by using this sort of picket fence approach. And, you know, perhaps it does fit in a little better with the village. Uh, so I think I'm okay with the, the approach he's taken, though I do think that bringing the fence down to the street seems, and, and so, is, is just very unusual. I can't think of an instance where I've seen that. So I think that might unfortunately kind of call attention to itself just by looking a little odd. So I'd like to hear what other Commissioners say about that. But as far as the approach, I can accept that.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
I'm actually fine with it as it is. And I do think it's a little odd that they carried the railings all the way down to the ground almost. And I think that they'll regret it because it's going to probably rust out in a fairly short period of time. But, I mean, I just, as a kind of summary of the day, it's kind of a, an interesting way to end an interesting day. Where I think the theme of the day would be, New York's a bitch, you know? You know, here are these guys to get C for ADA and now they got to deal with, uh, you know, landmarks and, yeah. Uh, you know, on top of the other stuff we saw today, it's tough, you know? And then you got the gate and the fiberglass, yeah, how much cleverness do you have to pack into a little ramp? But I think, I think it's fine as is and, and I, I would think it's appropriate and I'd vote for it.
Okay, Commissioner Devonshire?
I don't think it's a problem at all because it'll always be disguised by the taxi cab that's continually. I can go with it.
Okay. Commissioner Chen?
I agree with that to my cost.
Okay, Commissioner Bland?
Yeah, there's definitely been a theme of the day. Uh, and the day is now nearing the end, thank goodness. A long day, even though it's not supposed to be so long. Uh, I'm fine with it as it's been presented.
Okay, Commissioner Lutfi?
First of all, I wanna, I wanna say to the applicant, applicant that I really appreciate all of the time and energy you took to think about your approach and um, it, thank you for sharing it. Overall, I think that the approach is good. I think I would, I would actually not have the uh, not have the uh, not have it go all the way to the street. I would put it on top into the uh, uh, base. And I might lower it just a bit.
Okay, Commissioner Jefferson?
I can approve it.
Okay, Commissioner, uh, I think Commissioner Gustafson has gone. So Commissioner Holfer, uh, Commissioner Shamir Baron, excuse me.
Yes, I'm sorry, I came late to it, but I think I caught enough. And um, I think I agree with the Commissioners that, who have spoken thus far. And I, and, you know, I, the, the rail seems a little strange, but I can approve it as it's proposed.
Okay, all right, thanks. And Commissioner Holford Smith?
Yeah, I agree with most of the other comments. And I just want to applaud the applicant for coming up with a really ingenious way to incorporate this ramp at this location. Probably the only location he could put it had to be over the, the access door to the sidewalk hatch. And so I think it was a really clever solution.
Okay, all right, all right, so we've made it around. Commissioner Chapin, I know you had some concerns about the, the railing going over the ramp to the sidewalk and many Commissioners were okay with it. Have you come around to thinking about that differently?
Yeah, I, I think I can approve it as presented.
Okay, all right, so then would you make the motion, Commissioner Chapin?
Yes. And a matter of a certificate of appropriateness, borough Manhattan, LPC nineteen thirty-nine, one-one-eight, sixty-one Seventh Avenue South, Greenwich Village Historic District Extension Two. Two altered row houses originally built in eighteen thirty-two. Application is to modify an opening and install a ramp. Uh, I note that the building's facades were altered several times prior to designation, that the building occupies an unusual angular lot, a result of Seventh Avenue South cutting through the off-excess street grid of the district between nineteen fourteen and nineteen seventeen. And that Seventh Avenue South is lined with buildings of various types, sizes, and shapes, some with contemporary additions that contribute to the multi-layered context of the streetscape in the Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the modern door and stucco clad infill to be removed are not significant architectural features and will facilitate barrier-free access to the commercial ground floor. That the modified door opening featuring a wood door with ironwork will be consistent with the historic commercial character of Seventh Avenue South and Bleaker Street and will match the entrance door at the Seventh Avenue South. That the proposed ramp featuring light gray fiberglass grating will be in keeping with the surrounding concrete paving in terms of finish and will allow access to a sidewalk hatch without drawing undue attention to the installation. And that the proportions, scale, and placement of the proposed ramp will not overwhelm or detract from the significant architectural features or proportions of this corner building.
All right, and Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you second that motion?
Second the motion.
All right, and Rich, will you call the vote?
Sarah Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson's gone for the day. Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
And Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
Okay, with ten in favor, none opposed, and one not present, the motion carries.
Okay, so that's approved, thank you very much and good luck.
Thank you.
And Commissioners, that can, that concludes our day. Again, thank you all for your hard work and long hours and dedication as always. We, it's great for the city and even when we have items that are not as interesting as some of the bigger projects we see. It's, these are important projects that all contribute to our city. So thank you for that commitment.
Thank you, Sarah.
All right, see you next.